Okay, the meeting was called to order, so I'll ask everybody to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business is reorganization of the board, and I would accept nominations at this point for board chair for next year.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Jack Whitmer as chair.
Second. There's a motion on the floor to nominate me for chair for Charlene. I made the motion, and I'm seconded. Are there any other nominations for chair? Okay, to bring Jim and Tom up in speed, we just took a nomination for board chair for next year. I was renominated by Charlene, seconded by Jim. Looking for any other nominations for chair at this point. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of me for chair for next year, sitting by, saying hi. Tom?
Hi.
Brody?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dana?
Yes.
I will now accept nominations for vice chair.
Nominate Jim Pittman.
Jim Pittman's with motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Jim Pittman continuing as vice chair. Tom?
Hi.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yeah.
Jim Pittman. Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
And Chair Board's aye. Okay. Assignment to board committees. I'm gonna take this opportunity to juggle the committee assignments this year, hopefully to give everybody an opportunity to serve on committees that they have, have not served on before. Now, this is not in stone, but I think it's a good opportunity to move people around. What I'd like to suggest is on academic affairs, and you can jot these down and get back to me if you have some major issues with this. Academic affairs, Charlene, Brody, Dr. Jim, and Mary Shulker. Building and maintenance, Jim Pittman, Brody, Dr. Jim, and Stephanie. Yep. Finance, me, Tom Bigford, Jim Pittman, and Mary Shulker. And on human resources, I would take the lead on that as well. Tom Bigford, Dana, and Stephanie on human resources. And currently, the Wolfboro Community TV is still Charlene, if that's acceptable. Charlene, you stay on that.
Yes, and I'm also vice chair on that board, so I think I probably should do that. Thank you.
So, that's my suggestion for this year. Again, we don't have to discuss it anymore tonight. You get back to me if you wanna discuss the individual assignments.
I was, something, there was something Brody said relative to the finance committee, because the work of the finance committee is the work of the board to hear the budget and the proposals. And I know that we've historically done it as a committee, but I, I know, Tom, I do attended the finance committee meetings, and you found it very valuable and informative when you made that initial budget. I, I guess what I'm suggesting is that maybe we not have a finance committee, but that the board attend all the budget, like the initial, what we would've called the finance committee meetings to hear, because it is our, one of our chief duties of the board. And Jay, it's hard for us to hear back here.
Okay, we only have one microphone, so we actually have another microphone.
Sorry about that. Are you doing?
Yeah, right now, the committee structure is in policy right now, so we have to move through policies. Yeah, so we have to move through policies to see that. Of course, even though we have a committee of four, all board members, like Tom, are eligible to come to any of the meetings.
But aren't allowed to?
They get to ask questions. They, they wouldn't have necessarily input within the budget process as with the committee structure set up in the policy, but we can take a look at that.
For, I don't know, if you could hear in the back, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? I have a new chair.
You can speak right into it.
The, what I was suggesting, that we maybe look at the policy about the committee structure, and think about dissolving the finance committee and having the entire board hear the budget, the budget hearings, from all the administrators to the principals, so that every member of the board can hear all of the requests.
It would be, it would have, obviously, they'd be posted public meetings, and they'd have a public quorum.
And they have, they already-
They'd have to have a quorum there. So, if a finance meeting was held that way, and they had a quorum, it would be a finance meeting. So, anyway, we'll, we'll look at the policies first and decide if we have to do anything different.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just, I just wanna, I strongly agree with Stephanie. I think it's important for the entire board, and I hear your perspective loud and clear that it could be difficult to maybe form a quorum, that, that there is a lot of valuable work that a smaller set of people can do together, but I think, you know, the power of the purse is one of the most important things that this board exercises on behalf of residents and taxpayers, and I think it's important for every board member each year to be involved in the process, and there are certain decisions made by last year's finance committee that are in certain, you know, not necessarily contingencies, but results that were expected that might need to be carried on to the next budget process discussed earlier on, rather than at one board meeting prior to acceptance of the, oh, I should say two board meetings, because there's the first budget hearing, then the second one, as an entire board. I think the entire process is important for everyone to be a part of, but I understand it would require a policy update, but I think that's worthy of the board to look into.
All right, thank you. All right, let's see. We also have the ethics, the school board ethics policy that, that is in your, that is policy CBA, and the government has that in their packet. I'd like you to read through it. Yeah, BCA, or is it?
Oh, no, CBA.
Oh, I'm sorry, BCA, sorry. So, please read that through, and before the end of this meeting, we'll pass around the signature page and ask each board member to sign the ethics policy, which we do on an annual basis. Okay, we're, we're shifting around the school board meetings a little bit. Since we are in elementary school, we have a presentation this evening. We'd like to get the students in early so they can make their presentation, and then they can go home and get a good night's sleep before school tomorrow morning. So, at this point, we'd like to move forward with these Carpenter School presentations.
First, I'd like to begin by welcoming you all to Carpenter School. It's a pleasure to see Marcella and Brody, since both of those students, now, or young adults, I should say now, started at Carpenter School when I was here many years ago. So, nice to see you part of the board. Mary and I are so pleased to have you at Carpenter School, and just to know that we are enjoying our time here, working together, taking the co-principalship. Since we've been here, we've been involved in many different activities, but in particular, we've had our winter fun activities, where we've had our first grade students skating, we've had our second and third grade students over at Brewster with sledding and snow shoeing. We have also had some of our, or many of our students are represented on their art right here. If you're looking at kindergarten, you can see the porcupines in the first grade, you can see the ice huts in the third grade, you can see the art, and the second grade, you can see the other types of art products that they produce. They do such a wonderful job, Steve Aronella does a wonderful job with the art here. As we move into the spring, we saw the crocuses out front, they probably brought spring to you as you were walking by, as well as the daffodils, but also, it's, it's a time when we start to think about Memorial Day, we start to think about our field day, and all the things that are yet to come. It's a wonderful community, we can't thank the staff, the parents, the students, and all of you, the support that you've given us here at Carpenter School. And as we look forward to, you know, the spring coming and then the fall, we know that you'll be in good hands with someone who's, who will be taking our place in the future. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Katie Mills.
This month, we have some of our youngest learners in the district. We have a selection of our first graders along with our teacher, Ms. Danielle Rogers, and they are going to be telling you and showing you about some of the science that they are learning, specifically around the competency, use observations of the sun, moon, and stars to describe predictable patterns. And if you notice, within that competency, use observations, describe, those are scientific practices, those are things that real scientists do, and they're gonna walk you through how they're doing those things, specific to some sun, moon, and stars content. Laura Davis.
All right, so my name is Danielle Rogers, I teach first grade at Carpenter. I was lucky enough to be a GWRSD student my entire career, came back to teach in my hometown. I wanna start off by thanking everyone, thank the board members, administration, and community for being here tonight. I would also like to thank the families of these rock star students standing up here with me. They are not all in my class, we kind of have a, a variety of classes, I think we have some from all four first grade classes at school. We have busy schedules of meetings, sporting events, other family obligations. I know it's late, thank you so much for trusting me to work with your kiddos, and, and understanding the value of this evening and your child's educational journey. This group of fabulous firsties has been working together to share their learning with you, and they are beyond excited to give you a glimpse of what they've completed in relation to one of our science competencies. We use mystery science as part of our science curriculum, and students look forward to learning with Mystery Doug and his friends as much as possible, even during indoor recess, we check him out, or during snack, we listen to some of his other lessons too. At this point in the school year, students have examined moon and star patterns, and will later explore day patterns, which will include the sun, shadow, and seasonal patterns. The first grade earth and space competency we will examine is I can use observations of the sun, moon, and stars to describe predictable patterns. In this unit, students explore the moon and stars. They observe and record the appearance of the moon to determine its cyclical pattern. They also determine why stars are only visible at night, and how we can look to the north star to assist us if we become lost. Before we begin sharing our work up to this point, let's take a look at our early observation practices, all students should have as first graders. Before we begin, this is Charlotte, we have Finley, Ella, Jacob, and Jonah. Are you ready, Charlotte? You might have to grab this.
Okay.
Ready.
First, baby, first learn about what science is and how science is learned about the world and. What is science? Science is obturation, obtaining, observing the world by watching, listening, and writing. Science is curiosity, anyone can think like a scientist. What does a scientist do? Scientists are people who discover new things and research how things work. They are many different types of scientists. They are, they observe, measure, and communicate results to people like you and me. First, what does it mean to observe? When you observe, you pay close attention to things around you. It is using our senses and what we already know about a given object or situation. Like this apple, let them serve an apple.
All right, Jacob, let's use our scientific senses, observe it. What does it look like?
It feels hot.
Yeah, what else do you see?
It smells yummy.
When you look at it, what do you notice?
I see seeds.
What else?
And skin.
Okay, excellent.
What does prediction mean? A prediction is a guess of what might happen, based on what we know. What is a pattern? A pattern is something that happens in a cycle over and over again.
Then we find patterns, and we explore the, explore the moon and stars. We explore the, recorded what the moon looked, looked like to figure out the moon cycle. We always, also learned why we can only see stars at night.
First, we look at moon pictures and patterns and predicting. When we could see the full moon, we explored the shapes of the moon that we can see on, on different nights. We learn the names of the phases, such as full moon, crescent moon, half moon, waxing and waiting, yest, and new moon.
We made our own moon books, where we looked at photos of the moon that were, were taken every few days for an entire month. We worked with a partner and used pencils to outline where we saw the bright part of the moon. We shaded in the part of the moon that was dark. We compared the shapes of the moon as we looked through the book, and we predicted when we would see the next full moon. We became moon fortune tellers.
Do you wanna share that, Charlotte, really quick?
First, we have the moon.
Do you wanna take it along down the line and show them?
Next, we looked at stars and daily patterns. We investigated why the stars come out at night. We made our own models called star projectors to show why we can see stars at night, but disappear when the sun is out during the day. We used paper cups to project stars onto a picture of the sky, and we saw what happened to the stars when the sun came out. We used flashlights to add some-
You wanna show that experiment? So, what we did, we had little cutouts of the Big Dipper, right Ella? That's the Big Dipper? Okay, and we had this piece of paper that we hung on the wall, and we poked holes with a thumbtack through the bottom of the cup, and students had to line up the constellation with that picture, and then, Jacob, you're gonna continue explaining this job, right?
We worked with a partner, and each had a job to do. One of us was the star maker, and the other was the sunshine with the flashlight. During this activity, we also learned about constellations by Orion and the Big Dipper.
Last, we learned how we can use stars to help us if we get lost. We listened to a story about a boy named Ryan, how, who goes on a camping trip with his dad. They need to find their way back to their campsite. When it is dark, we listened about looking for the north star if we ever get lost at night.
What will we learn in that?
Our next exploration that scientists will be investigating day patterns, where we will observe sun, shadows, seasonal and daylight cycles. Like Mystery Doug always says, have fun and stay careful.
Thank you for listening tonight.
Ready? One, two, three.
Okay, the next, next item up is agenda review. Anything to add? Okay. Okay, we're gonna move into the non-public session now, I mean, the public input session, I'm sorry. And a couple, a couple of notes. We're gonna, please try to limit comments to three minutes, so everyone has an opportunity to speak. If it looks like there's enough speakers, it's gonna go well over the 15 minutes, I'll certainly ask the board to extend public, public input at this point. We'll also have public input at the end of the meeting as well. I, I ask that you respect everyone else's opinions, whether you agree or disagree with who the speaker is. If there is any shouting from the audience, if there's any name-calling, if there's any inappropriate language, I'll shut down public input and we'll move on with our meeting. So, please, respect everyone's, other, everyone's opinion, and whether you agree or disagree, and you'll have a time of three minutes for each speaker. And when you come out, if there are anybody in the audience that is not a resident of the government or school district, we ask you to wait until everyone else has an opportunity to speak that is a member of the government or school district, and then you'll be welcome to speak as well. Can I get my timer up? Amy DeBravo, Amy DeBravo, can I?
Hi, I'm Bobby Bemmett, Wolfboro first. That was so much fun. I haven't seen them in a year. I was in kindergarten last year, I think, for 58 days with them, so watching them go from learning to write their names, to what we just witnessed, that's just, it's, it's so fun watching them grow. I just came here for just some quick housekeeping. Last week, we finished out our elections with FAAM finishing up, and we had a warrant article on there that had further housekeeping, warrant article number nine, and I know, Chair Whitmer, that your town of Tuftonboro voted 70 percent to protect our books and our libraries, and make it possible that we actually really don't need any more conversations about this, 'cause the voters have spoken. But part of that was there was some housekeeping that letters would go off to the Commissioner of Education, and the Education Committee, and some other places. I was wondering where the board is on that aspect of that warrant article.
I can answer that, we did speak about that, and according to the warrant article, the board, if, if approved, was to send a letter stating a positive vote, not whether the board supports, it doesn't score, but a positive vote, and we will be doing that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hi. My name is Rodney Harding, I'm in Wolfboro. Despite being a teacher and speaking in front of kids, I get nervous in front of adults a lot, so I wrote all my notes out. I am an educator, I taught for 36 years. My mother and grandmothers were teachers and school librarians, and I'm here to speak out for many of the concerns, families and citizens, who are actually appalled and angered by what we feel is deception and misinformation regarding school warrant article nine, and by the inappropriate sexual content being given to GWRSD children. At the March Board meeting, I assume this person, a woman named Bobby, stated that the warrant article was specifically intended to counter a New Hampshire legislative bill, which was to specify that obscene materials in K-12 schools are unlawful. She also stated that if her warrant article was not passed, well, teachers can no longer teach LGBTQ, thus acknowledging that GWRSD is already teaching this ideology to children, and that they want to be able to use obscene materials. I will address later that possibly some parents might've wanted to know about that ahead of time. I think that voters were very, very confused with the wording of the warrant article, they didn't understand what it meant, and most of us, including myself, were not aware of the kind of books that have recently been published for kids. They weren't in existence five years ago, 10 years ago. They are in existence now, and it's quite shocking. As an experienced professional educator, I am wondering where exactly new sexual behavior ideology lessons are described and mandated in the curriculum. I wonder what is the content area strand, what is the grade level, what are the learning targets, and how is it, how is LGBTQ proficiency going to be assessed? Regarding GWRSD policy IGE, in reality, parents cannot request alternative materials or a waiver from objectionable class discussion unless they are always forewarned about such content. And I'm wondering, do all of the teachers always contact all of the parents of their students before exposing them to possibly concerning or questionable content? And what if the teacher personally hasn't believed that the content is just fine, but many families would disagree if they were- But many families would disagree if they were aware and informed. And finally, um I know there was some discussion at the last meeting. No one, to my knowledge, certainly, has ever stated that our school staff, especially trained counselors, should not attempt to assist any students who seem to be experiencing any form, any version of sexual dysphoria or confusion. However, choosing to disseminate sexually graphic, vulgar, profane, and obscene books and materials to minor aged children is a problem. It's not the solution. Thank you.
Hi, uh my name is Neelak Yule, I live here in Wolfboro. Um I have a question based on what you just said, which is, how do you teach LGBTQ? Um I'm not really sure what you mean by that. Uh but anyway, regarding the contents of these books. Um there is a group of us that has started a book club. And I act, because we, we are absolutely, you know, we wanna have these conversations too, that we wanna know what's inside. We wanna have honest, safe discussions about these materials. Um and we invite all of you to join us in doing so. If you have a question about a book, the best thing to do is to read it. Because a lot of these books, there's context that you take one little section from and you're missing the entire context, the entire conversation, the discussion that comes from these stories. And there's also a distinction that's been brought to my attention that I value very much, which is there is a difference between age appropriate and developmentally appropriate. I certainly hope that my kiddos are doing age appropriate activities. Um but developmentally, they also need to know what's coming down the line as they age and as they grow. So I am not standing here saying that I, I mean, I have a right to all these books myself. I wonder if you all have? Um and if you haven't, then I definitely encourage you to, because I've started to read some of these books. And I have to tell you, I could pick one day and go, ooh, that's maybe a little bit off. But within the context of the entire story, you're missing, you're missing the point if you focus on that one little bit. But anyway, long story short, please feel free to join us in reading all these books, having honest conversation, and acknowledging that our children need to know what's coming ahead. It's not like imagine we turn eighteen and go, woo, we can read these materials now. Or wow, I'm twenty-one and now I can drink. That's just not how it works. Thank you.
Hi, uh State Representative Laney Cordelli from Tuftonboro. Um another parent brought these handouts, I'll just leave them for the board. They are materials found um in the SOAR app that is available in this school district. Um but um we heard talk about a warrant article. And since the board felt it appropriate to put forward a political warrant article, um I think it's more appropriate that the board be aware of the Parents' Bill of Rights that will be heard before the House, that's been passed by the Senate. Um it'll be on April eighteenth. And let me just read the purpose statement from the bill. The General Court finds and reaffirms that parents have a fundamental right and responsibility to direct the upbringing, education, and care of their minor children. And that in order to meaningfully and effectively exercise this right, no educational institution may withhold information about a child, the child's health, the school environment, or the child's in-school behavior from a parent or parents absent a compelling government interest. Parents' rights begin with the child, not when the government says that where their rights start. So I would think it would be very appropriate, and I imagine many parents in the district would be happy to hear the board proclaiming their support for this legislation. Thank you.
Anyone else at this point?
I want to speak again because um at the last meeting, a person spoke three times.
Okay, one more, one more three minutes and then we're gonna, we'll stop.
This probably isn't three minutes. Um so I did wanna confirm that I have books. So yes, I have been reading the books. Because as I said, most of us had no idea these books existed at all. And that's even with me being an educator. And so um yes, I, I am aware of the books, I am reading them. I've read quite a few. And I would, I had marked pages, but then when you said that there was no profanity, and I see that some kids are still here. You have allowed them in the schools, and I'm pretty sure you would not want me to read these pages out loud right now. I actually sent direct quotes from these books to the Granite State News. And they were too profane and vulgar for publication in the newspaper. So I think that's something for us to think about. That this is the exact same material that you've approved for students, minor aged children. But yet the newspaper would not print it. The other comment I have is that, actually a couple of things. That someone who's an attorney, and I have also taken a couple of school law courses when I was working on my doctorate. And um there's a lot in here about obscenity. And no, it is not protected under the First Amendment right to free speech. And in fact, violations of federal obscenity laws are criminal offenses. It also includes things like the drawings and cartoons that appear to um to demonstrate minors engaged in sexual activity, which is definitely in these graphic novels. And it's illegal under federal law. And finally, um someone at the last meeting was comparing people that had varying opinions from what theirs were. First of all, they called us all ignorant, and that's a horrible thing to say to anybody.
We don't need to reiterate what happened at the last meeting.
Well, it's just a horrible thing to say, and it's very inappropriate, it's very rude, it's very disrespectful. I'm not calling anyone ignorant because they have a different opinion or values or culture than I do. I would never do that. And since that person chose to pretend like wanting appropriate material instead of explicitly sexual material for students is akin to Hitler book banning, I found a quote for you that Adolf Hitler said in June nineteen thirty-three. "If the older generation cannot get accustomed to this, we shall take their children away from them and rid them as we feel needful to the Fatherland." So there you go, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna hold, hold public input at this point. We're gonna have public input again at the end of the meeting?
Yes, Chair.
Yes.
Mister Chair, I would like to make a motion that we allow, that we extend public input by another ten minutes. I guess it'll die if there's no second.
Second. Okay, well, um if we have, well, if we extend this another uh ten minutes? Uh okay, well, five minutes at the end of the meeting. Alright, we'll take a vote of, vote of the board to extend public input for ten more minutes. Do we, Charlene, both made their motions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Tom. Brody.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Because we also have public input at the end of the meeting, huh?
Uh Dr. Jim.
Yes.
Jim Pittman.
Yes.
Charlene.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
And Chair Laura Wright. Okay, so we have ten more minutes of public input. Um again, please limit your comments to three minutes so we, everybody can get, get an opportunity to speak. And name and address again.
Bobby Bennett, still Wolfboro. Um I just wanted to address the fact that we do have an elected official in the room who came up here and spoke on behalf of a bill. So I just wanted to say that SB two seventy-two is almost identical to HB ten, which the um state did hear, the House did hear it a few weeks ago, and it was defeated. Um what that bill does is it says if a child goes to a teacher and trusts something in a teacher, such as that they're LGBTQ, um that the, that the teacher then has to do a mandatory reporting to the parent. Now, speaking of mandatory reporting, we all know that our teachers and our schools are mandatory reporters. So odds are, if a child can say this to a teacher but cannot say it at home, there's probably something at home that the school might be watching anyway. So I just wanted to clarify that SB two seventy-two is similar to HB ten and the House did defeat it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also Wolfboro, and um regarding the parent right issue and the book thing, I'm a little confused that the very people who are saying that we are sexualizing children are then turning around and saying good teachers. If my child says they wanna be he and him, and I think they're she or her, you need to call and tell me that. I, I taught school for, I've still teach kids, thirty something years now. Every single beginning of year, what's your name? I'm probably gonna say it wrong, tell me if I say it wrong. What do you like to be called? Oh, you like to go by your middle name and not your first name? Okay, I mean, I've had hundreds of those conversations. The only one I drew the lineup was Pookie. I, I wasn't going there. Paul was gonna be Paul, now Pookie, couldn't do Pookie. Although it would have come in handy, the time I called, I could call the house and know who Paul was. And then I finally remembered, oh, Paul's Pookie. Um but to, to then turn around and tell your students, oh, you know, I, I had kids who their parents were in jail. They would play their foster parents' last name because they don't wanna use their parents' last name. It wasn't their legal last name, but I'm not gonna tell somebody what can and cannot be called. I'm not gonna say to you, if you wanna be he, you wanna be she, that's up to you. And I don't feel like, I, I never called parents and said, oh, Christine wants to be Chris, is that okay? Or Elizabeth likes Liz, can I call her that? I'm certainly not gonna call a parent and say, um, your child wants to be he or him, but she might be your him to me. Or, no, no. So it's confusing. Because on one hand, they're saying, oh, these books sexualize children, and on the other, they're saying, please sexualize our children. Confusing.
Laney Cordelli, State Representative. Misinformation. Uh HB ten was not defeated, it was laid on the table, could be brought back next year. We are hearing the Senate bill. Uh parents, excuse me, uh teachers do not have to call parents and tell them what students tell them. That's inaccurate, that's not in either of the bills. What is in the bill is that if a parent calls and questions the teacher about something, the teacher cannot withhold information unless there's a compelling government interest. And all that is laid out in the bill. Um so uh I hope that the public out there will disregard the misinformation that's being spread.
Hudson Hammer, uh Tuftonboro. Uh so I'm just gonna read a page here, because there's one thing about having stuff that's subliminal in a book that maybe kids wouldn't understand, and this is very graphic, I think.
Remember there are killed, there are children in the room?
Well, the children are reading these books right now.
Like, like I said, if, if anything is appropriate, you said.
Yeah.
If you'd like, if you'd like to leave that here for the board to look at, that's fine.
I think there's a whole bunch of copies right there. Well, you guys should read it today, not next meeting or something. It's definitely readable, printed offline, kids can read it?
I know. Hudson, Hudson, could you leave the documentation here?
It's right there. Well, no, you brought it up.
Oh, it's the same thing.
Right, anyone else?
Can I just say one more?
One more thing, we still have one of the ten minutes left, not much.
Okay, no, super quick, I totally understand what you're doing. Just wanna clarify, those books aren't here in Carpenter, there is a difference. We're all talking, I do agree with you on developmentally appropriate materials for children. My child is nine. I would not share those with her. Those are not here in the school libraries at the elementary schools. So I will meet you on that station, so thank you, and thank you.
Last, last speaker, three minutes.
Very, very short, except you said it's not here in Carpenter, great.
I'm sorry, name and town?
Uh my question is.
Name and town, please, or you can't speak.
I'm not telling you.
Alright, we're done, we're, we're done.
Can we come and look at the library?
You either state your name and your town that you're from.
Could we make an appointment to come and look at the library?
Okay, I'll, I'll ask for a recess to the board, you have a motion for recess.
So move.
Second. Uh we will move on. Okay, we will move on, the next item on the agenda is uh approval of our March thirteenth school board meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the meetings on March thirteenth, uh twenty-three, so we.
Okay, moved by Charlene, seconded by Dr. Jim. And all those in favor of approving any comments first on the March thirteenth school board meeting? Okay, here it is now, Tom.
Aye.
Brody.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Um yes.
Dr. Jim.
Yes.
Jim Pittman.
Yes.
Charlene.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
And Chair votes aye. Alright, the next, uh next item is the Academic Affairs Committee meeting on March twentieth, for those that were there. Do I hear any motion?
I'll move that we accept the minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty-three Academic Affairs Committee meeting.
I'll say it.
Okay, we move by Charlene, seconded by Tom, uh any discussion? Okay, seeing those that were there for approval, uh Tom.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Yes.
Uh Charlene.
Aye.
Okay. Uh next is the uh Building and Maintenance meeting on March twenty-third. Do I hear a motion?
Move to accept the minutes.
Moved by Jim Pittman.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jim.
Second.
Okay, so those that were there, um that was Brody, Dr. Jim, uh Jim Pittman, and Dana. Um Brody.
Aye.
Uh Jim, Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Okay, we have approved the minutes. And approving the manifests. Okay, the manifest this evening being signed, uh the payroll, uh county's payroll manifest, rather, is one million, three hundred twenty thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Payroll manifest being signed is one million, eight hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and ten cents. Total manifest being signed is three million, one hundred seventy-three thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Do I hear a motion to approve the manifests?
So move. I'll say it.
Okay, number Dr. Jim, seconded by Brody. Okay, all those in favor of approving the manifests, uh Tom.
Aye.
Brody.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Yes.
Dr. Jim.
Yes.
Uh Jim Pittman.
Yes.
Charlene.
Aye.
Mary.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, uh moving on to the Student Representative Report, Marcela, thank you for being sufficient.
Hello, everyone. Uh as of right now in the high school, our French and Spanish classes are getting ready to embark on their trips abroad. There are around twenty French students traveling to Quebec and twelve Spanish students traveling to Costa Rica. As for the Spanish students, they will have the opportunity to live with Costa Ricans by each participating in individual home stays. Additionally, um the testing for our sealified literacy is happening next week for students in French and Spanish in the highest levels. We already have ten students with this honor. And last year, only twenty-four students in the entire state were awarded the sealified literacy. As for sports, the spring season is here and all sports teams have tried out and are getting ready for their first matchups. Our baseball team also just got back from their trip to Florida, where they have the opportunity to play with teams from all over the country, even as far as Alaska. Finally, our senior scholar athletes will be recognized tomorrow in Concord by the NHI AA. Thank you.
Okay, and Marcela, while you're, while you have the mic, a little congratulations. Talk to Marcela for uh coming in first place uh in the six hundred meter and first place in the four by two wheelie as well. Talk to Marcelo for coming in first place in the six hundred meter and first place in the four by two wheeling as well. Dr. Jim.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for this robust discussion. My name is Sterling Eric Allen, Superintendent of Schools. I'm here to present the findings and recommendations from my first-year entry plan. You can go to the next slide. I'll have this presentation posted on our website. I'll also send it to WCTV so that you can record it with the slides so everyone can have a copy. Can you hear me okay? I can speak in my teacher voice. All right, is that better? Okay, so the objectives of this process was to determine the issues where board members believe we should focus our efforts in the next year, to determine issues which the SAU and school leadership face in their work over the next year, to determine what the key issues are for other stakeholders, the community organizations and our partners, and to work with the school board to prioritize these potential initiatives next level. So my process that I've undertaken over the past year began in July. Interviews with school board members, we had one-on-one meetings last summer. SAU administrators, we also had meetings last summer. Principals, we met over the course of the summer. Students, I met with student groups in schools this winter and community partners. Now, really, the heart of my listening tour were the visitations to each school for visibility and for learning. So January, February, March postponed due to lots of snow. I did manage to get around to every building and talk to staff almost full days in each building to host an open forum when staff could come in, talk to me, just to meet and greet or to share what's on their minds, hopes, wishes, thoughts where we should improve, and really what people are proud of. It was an absolute honor to meet with people and truly honored and grateful that people took the time to meet with me and share this information with me. And that is what I'm using today as a basis for my findings and recommendations. It's all based on what the people of Governor Whitmore School District told me that is in this presentation. And document review. Not as fun, but I did that too. These are the documents that they reviewed. So manuals and minutes and grants and budgets from past years, our emergency response plans, our job descriptions, lots of documents in human resources, our CBAs, our collective agreements for support staff and teachers and administrators, handbooks, calendars, plans, our annual reports, accreditation report and special education data. So lots of information. This information is part of what we do, especially what a superintendent does. But this was as a way to learn about this fantastic district, Governor Whitmore. So I'm going to tell you a few of my findings and recommendations. And in the end, I'll explain where we go from here. So the first one is strategic planning. So I found that strategic planning hasn't been done in this district for quite some time. So my recommendation is that we initiate some strategic planning, especially on the heels of the Portrait of a Learner project that we're doing across the district. We're trying to determine what our idea of the outcomes for students should be by the time they leave our district. And once we figure out what we're looking for, what our goals are, then we can do a self-assessment and determine what we should be doing to get there, what we should be doing to really achieve what we think we want. So my recommendation is to initiate strategic planning as well as develop a formal process for conducting ongoing surveys of students who have graduated because then truly we know what our outcomes are. It's based on the students who graduated and how they're equipped to be adults in this world. Next, competency-based education. While there is robust competency-based education planning implementation efforts across this district, particularly in grade K through eight, there's a need for continuing education efforts for all our stakeholders in this area. Competency-based education is complex. It can be a little confusing. It's not how I was taught when I was growing up. But it is what is best for kids. So we need more communication, we need more information for everyone in our system around this area. And specifically, we need a rollout plan for competency-based education at the high school. We need key decision points regarding important areas like grading and reporting. It's really a specific piece that we need to roll out very carefully with parents. Next, technology. So as we know, over the pandemic, it really accelerated our technology efforts across the district. So we're not unique in that way. That happened at, you know, in most schools, in most districts across the country and far within the country. However, the shift to support such an increase in technology has not necessarily kept up with how quickly we moved with our hardware and software. So we don't have as much support as we need. The district should work with technology staff and library media specialists to create a plan to integrate more efficiently into the curriculum. The IT department is an incredible resource, albeit modest in numbers for this size district. So what happens is the technology support for all our staff tends to fall upon other staff. It doesn't go away. It just falls on other staff, like our wonderful library and media specialists. And while they're great at it, and I don't want them to stop doing it, I think we need to integrate it more across our schools and our staff. Does that sound good? Okay. Support staff. Some of our most valuable employees working on the front line with some of our most vulnerable and needy kids. Paraprofessionals are clearly dedicated to their work and their students in this district. I've met many of them. However, there's consistently an average of thirty unfilled support staff positions at any given point in this district. Further, there seems to be a widespread misunderstanding of the Support Staff Association contract. That's GUISA. GUISA is V, somewhere, somewhere. GUISA, GUISA is the Governor Whitmore Support Staff Association. Their contracts, their own members have a misunderstanding of their own roles, their benefits, their rights. And so I think we should have a plan where we're supporting them better. We're supporting them, we are working with them, we're partnering with them to help them understand their contracts. And we should also have a plan to recruit and retain support staff in our district. Now, these next two are related. The last two are related. And my spoiler alert is I think the last two are the priority and most important. So student behavior and mental health, they go together. Student dysregulation and even acts of violence are on the uprise according to staff. Students report feeling depressed and anxious most of the time and Governor Whitmore is unfortunately not unique across this country. Quality resources exist in our schools, homes and community. However, the need far exceeds the support that is available. My recommendation is that we bolster supports and services for students according to an organized plan across our schools. It's clear that the need is a widespread issue that spans across schools and homes. We need to partner with parents on this issue. Parents need tools that are clearly communicated as students lack a sense of belonging in and out of school. The district should develop an equity plan and policy that affirms the identity of each student and celebrates differences to create a sense of connection and belonging for each and every student in our schools. This is related to safety and security. Mental health is related to behavior and it's related to safety. When I arrived at Governor Whitmore's last summer, there was a clear cry from community members to increase safety and security across our schools. That includes hardening buildings, sure. It includes safety training for our staff, yes. And coordinating with first responders in all towns. This was a consistent ask across our stakeholders. This was something that was consistent even among people, across people who usually don't agree on things, was that we need our kids to feel safe and be safe in buildings. My recommendation and my statement is that there's a direct link between a lack of feeling of belonging and connection and an increased risk of harming yourself and others. The district should implement a behavior intervention team and process led by a trained safety professional in order to recognize signs when students are behaving differently than usual, in order to take action sooner and thereby preventing dangerous events. Now, there are already some great things going on here. I wanted to end on a high note. We have board training, we have professional development planning, we have lots of professional development and curriculum planning. We have educator evaluation ongoing. Our safety and security task force, we have a public meeting. We had our first ever in the fall and our next one is this Wednesday, three thirty at the Kingswood High School Lecture Hall. That includes first responders from every single one of our towns. They all come together, police and fire, and we talk about how we can make our kids safer. And I'm proud to say that at the first meeting, the first responders brought up mental health. They know the connection, our first responders know the connection between safety and security on their end and students feeling belonging and connection. We have the Portrait of a Learner initiative. This is just getting underway. Parents will hear more about that soon. We have task forces for curriculum. We have a comprehensive policy review. That's robust. I know that's the third time I said that word, but it is necessary for policy review. And our job descriptions, that's going to be another project on the horizon. So finally, my summary. Our schools, our districts is a very, very good place for kids and staff and for families. This report represents a starting point for the formulation of long-term school board goals and district goals, the development of superintendent goals, because that's how I will guide the district, and most importantly, the strategic planning effort for all of our public schools. So I will use all of this information, this plan, because my goal over the coming months is to work with the SAU team and our principals, our building-level leaders, to develop action plans for the priorities that the school board and the SAU and the parents agree are priorities. And that is my report. Thank you very much.
Let's move on to election results. Okay, good. So election results are posted on our website. Under School Board and Annual Meeting, we have the twenty-twenty-three election results. So I think most people have heard of these thus far. But I'd like to congratulate again Mary Schilleriff for a one-year term, Tom Bickford for a three-year term, Dr. Jim Manning for a three-year term, and Charlie Seibel for a three-year term. We are very grateful to the voters for support of our teacher contracts and our operating budget as well as field capital reserve repairs and improvements and the additional SRO for the Kingswood complex. Thank you very much to our communities. Next on the agenda, field trip update. You'll see in your packet, there is one overnight field trip that I will bring to your attention. So one is for Kingswood Theater. This is the annual New Hampshire Educational Theater Guild State Festival. And then there's also the art department at the high school. This is not overnight, but this is out of state, so that's also something that we inform the board. The art department is going to the Boston Museum of Fine Arts. Very exciting for those students. Okay, so a next item is end of year. So the first item is the last day of school. I'm excited to announce the last day of school. So based on our calculations of hours that students need to fulfill, the last day of school will be Tuesday, June twentieth, which is a half day. So although we had six days, we had six snow days and we transitioned to traditional snow days, we don't have to make up all six because we calculated the hours. And we determined that students can end on Tuesday, on the twentieth. That is a change in calendar, so that would require an action of the board.
Okay. Motion to accept the last day of school, June twentieth?
Dr. Jim made that.
Dr. Jim made it? No, Jim Pittman made it.
I said it.
Dr. Jim seconded.
Two Jims, okay.
Okay. So the last day of school, the approval by the school board is June twentieth, a half day. All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Brody?
I had one question before. What day of the week is that?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Originally, it was Friday, but we have to make up a day and a half.
Well, that's good. I would imagine a lot of students may skip a half-day Friday.
Yeah. I don't know. I need to say aye, okay. Dr. Jim?
Hi.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to, too.
Oh, Stephanie, I'm sorry. I checked you off and I didn't put you in. Sorry.
Okay, the next item, this is just information for the board, end of school events that are in your packet. We have big districts, so it's a long list of events. I encourage you to partake in some of these events. There are concerts, luncheons, banquets, receptions, many wonderful events at the end of a school year. If you have a question about any of these time or such, I recommend you can email us and we can hit to that or contact the principal.
I was gonna ask her if these can be publicly posted on our website.
Yes, and also I include the current events each month in the newsletter. But this is an idea, we should post this.
Even attach it to the next newsletter.
Yeah, great idea.
Yeah, so there's a grid that goes out and board member could sign up for those activities and then you can attach them down.
We'll make sure that happens. Thank you. And then the last item under end of year, this does require an action, joint boards affirmation. So these are the sending districts into our tech center.
So we're affirming their participation. So I would look for a motion to affirm the participation in Crosscut Mountain, Moltenborough, and Farmington in our tech center. So move. Time of Brody? Second to Tom?
No.
Any questions on that? This is an annual affirmation.
When do we meet with the other boards?
The next board meeting in May is the junior board meeting, when we update them on the process at the tech center. And then our A and M, the trade, and then our Bay Area. And then our regular board meeting is held after that.
Okay.
Oh, right.
All right, all those in favor of affirmation of Crosscut Mountain, Farmington, and Moltenborough in the tech center, students saying aye. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pickman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Aye.
And Chair was aye.
Thank you. Next item in superintendent's report, school board meeting schedule we put together for you. You'll see a couple shifts in location. We moved Brookfield back to August so that all the schools would be during the school year so that students can be available and present. And we kept the winter months central in Wolfboro.
Any comments on the school district path calendar?
Yes, I was just, I was a little bit confused because I thought we usually listed where our public meetings started, not where our non-public meetings started, because usually this is put on our website and promulgated with the public. We have non-public at 6:00. Some people may show up and wait an hour until our 7:00 o'clock meeting. And we don't always need non-public too.
Right, that's probably a good point, I think. We probably should change the time of the regulable meeting. That's right, there is a statement right at the top that actually explains that.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I guess myself, so.
But if you missed it, Brody, that's, you know, important to look.
That maybe other people may miss it.
Yeah, when the school board agendas are posted, they clearly state the non-public at 6:00 and 7:00 is the regulable meeting when they're posted as required, so.
I would think we'd want to send this in the newsletter so parents could print it out somewhere to the end so they could have an idea of, you know, we put a little note bold at the top part and then a little note that says subject to change because we do change our stuff, but I think it, you know, I think it's fine the way it is, we're just really delineating 6:00 PM is when non-public starts and usually public starts at 7:00 and sharing and letting the public know that it can't change.
Okay. All right, so listening to that, we have a motion to approve the board agenda or the board schedule as we presented.
I just have one more comment. Last year, we needed a board finance meeting to review staffing, the staffing line of the budget separating from, can everyone here?
That would, I think if the finance, depending on how the finance committee is structured after the earlier discussion, if we need to have an extra meeting, then we have an extra posted meeting to do that. So this is the basic agenda for the finance as it stands.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this schedule with the suggestions that we discussed.
Move by Brody, second to Jim.
Go ahead. Just want to remind people about what's going on in Brookfield meeting, but definitely have air conditioning, so be prepared. You're gonna go to that meeting.
I know, everybody wears short-sleeve shirts that night.
It doesn't have any air conditioning, it's a little bit down low.
I won't let my sport jack.
Not my doing, believe me.
Hawaiian shirt meeting?
Yeah, Hawaiian shirt, yeah, yes. An appropriate shorts if you wish. Okay, all those in favor of approving the school board meeting schedule for next year? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair was aye.
Just one last item, one last item on the agenda. The Kingswood Regional High School Principal Search Committee. We have Jack Widmer and Dr. Jim Manning serving on the committee in addition to other administrators and teachers and parents. And that concludes superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have, two things. We did send letters of sympathy to Lisa Goodwin, the chorus and music teacher at the middle school, and to Nancy Rose from the SAU office. And we are looking to schedule a New Hampshire School Board Association training for board members sometime in May. And we have the week of May 15th to the 19th, which is available for Barrett and Will from School Board Association to come up and sit with us and go over some school board training. If whichever days, please get back to the SAU office whichever days would be best for you. And the early evening, probably they come up from Concord and spend a few hours with us, so we'd like to have them. And I think face to face and that kind of communication is terrific. There's also for Mary and for any of the board members that haven't been through the school board training, there's webinars that are on the New Hampshire School Board Association site that are terrific, kind of take you through the process. And any questions that you may have for anything to do with school boards, you can reach out to me or Jim Pickman or any of us that have been on for a while and run you through the All right. Committee reports, academic affairs, Charlene?
Can everyone here be okay or should I get a microphone? Okay, great. Well, first I'm gonna give you a little bit of an update before we talk about policies. Dr. Hills, who's here somewhere? There she is. She presented some very interesting information to the committee when we last met on March the 20th. At the Kingswood Regional Middle School for the fourth quarter of the year, we're going to be replacing the study call with the film studies course. And this was, you know, something that came about because of the staffing issue, but also it sounds as if it's going to be an incredibly informative and illustrative type of offering for students that they can take advantage of as opposed to just having a study hall. And also, you know, Dr. Hills, if you want to jump in at any point to elaborate, feel free. At the high school, one of the things that we learned about is what I think is a very exciting enhancement to our current graduation pathways. Currently at the high school, we require 26 credits to graduate. The state only requires 20 credits. And so what we, what Dr. Hills has proposed that we do is add two different pathways for graduation. One would be a pathway that only requires the state minimum of 20 credits. And then add another one in addition to that, which would be a 20-credit pathway, 28-credit pathway, that would be designated an honors distinction diploma. And one of the things that additionally we've learned about in terms of the process is that the application process for both, for all three pathways really, will occur during the junior year spring semester. Do you like to add anything to that?
I'll answer questions if there's questions to be answered.
I have a question. Which required credits are no longer going to be required? There's a decrease in four credits, that's, is that a one class in the high school or is that two courses?
So you're talking about the difference between the standard or the state diploma and the standard diploma that most students get?
Yeah.
So there's a difference of one credit in social studies, a difference of one credit in science, and a difference of four electives.
Okay, and so what's the distinction in diplomas? I mean, I assume all the students get the same Kingswood diploma, but is there a distinction for college application process or other kinds of opportunities of education?
In your transcript. So the transcript will tell the story of, you know, if you're taking the basic or you're getting a state diploma, it will show that you earned anywhere between 20 and 25 credits. If you've earned the standard diploma, your transcript will show 26 or potentially more credits. And the honors distinction diploma will show at least 28 credits, but there are also some requirements in the rigor of the courses that you take. So some honors or AP level coursework, a world language requirement.
Okay, so the difference, what's the difference between additional credits between the standard diploma and the honors diploma? Is it just any kind of electives?
No. So there are two more credits required, but with the honors distinction, you'll have one more half-credit of social studies, you will have one more credit of math, one more credit of science, credits in world language, and you'll have fewer electives, but you're making up for some of those in some of that advanced coursework. So honors or AP coursework in your, in those other areas.
Okay, thank you. Dana?
Is there one more category, I believe, for identified special ed students? They have even less credits to graduate?
Yes.
And what's that number?
That is, well, actually, I'm gonna defer a calorie to that. Or actually, yes.
I can speak to that. I can speak to that. So if any student who graduates with a diploma, whether they have a disability or not, are eligible for any of those three diploma pathways. However, there are some students who may stay until they're age 22, depending on the decision of the special ed team. And those students would walk with their peers and receive a certificate of attendance.
Okay. And then continuing on, I wanted to thank Brody. He made some great suggested revisions regarding policy IKF, which is the high school graduation policy. And tomorrow, on our board, on your board side, you will be able to go in and see what those, and see what the revised IKF policy is because it's gonna incorporate your excellent suggestions. And I wanted to thank him for contacting Heather with that.
I did it right this time. Usually I bring it up during the meeting, but this time I was like, let me contact Heather before.
They were great ideas. Okay, so continuing on, looking at our policies that we were looking at, you'll see that recommended for adoption first read is JL CJA, which is the emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletics participation. Recommended for revision first read is EBCR, Administrative Guidelines, School Closings for Bad Weather, and looking at the policy, that the actual policy, it looks as if one of the things we've changed is EBCR is going to be renamed EBCD-R. So just, you know, not to put too fine a point on it. And then, as I just mentioned, recommended for revision is IKF, and those suggested revisions will be ready for you to look at tomorrow. And let's see, last but not least, recommended for withdrawal first read is BID, and that is the policy previously for student board representative, and as some of you may recall from previous, you know, previous meeting way back when, we've already revised that policy, and so we no longer need this one. And I think, oh, one thing I wanted to mention is that there are two policies that we're going to be updating, I believe, in our next batch of policies that we're going to be looking at, and those are policies EBCA and JL CJ. And once again, I'd like to ask my colleagues if, since these are up for first read, between now and the next board meeting, preferably before, so we have a chance to incorporate them, if you have any suggested revisions, please contact me and Heather, and between the two of us, we'll sort things out. Do you have a question?
I have one suggestion.
Okay.
My one would be having for the, having a similar layout as the standard graduation requirement for 26 credits, having similar kind of table for the honors pathway and similar table for the state requirement, just so that I, I don't know, I mean, maybe that might be too much, but just so people understand the breakdown of what the credits are.
So in other words, you would like to see, you would like to see a total of three of these, one for the current 26-credit, one for the 20-credit, and one for the 28-credit?
Yeah, I think that's a better explanation than the paragraph, because a paragraph doesn't break down exactly what the credits are.
Well, let the academic affairs and the superintendent work on that process and see if.
And you're gonna be on there, so we'll work on that.
I will be, so it'll be my responsibility to do that.
I actually have one more question I have to that. Katie, I was wondering if you could help me and the board understand how the new pathways will intersect with the gold and silver scholar distinction that we currently have in place? How will that knit together?
They will knit together. Gold and silver scholars have additional, they have a community service component to it, so they will knit together.
Gold scholars have to pay us with the remaining honors courses, et cetera, right?
Yes, but again, it has, it has community service pieces beyond just the score.
Yeah, I think maybe the rubric or whatever that's used to create the score and basis, how is that gonna be affected by the additional credits being earned, you know, for those? Does it give them a different advantage with the 26-credit students when you're talking about core scholars and the topical scholars? How that's gonna work into the system?
So we'll be looking at that. The honors distinction diploma won't roll out right away because current juniors and seniors won't have had the option from the get-go to do that, so we have some time for that to, for us to look and dive into that. And I just want to add, if you are getting the standard diploma, it does not preclude you from taking honors and AP level courses. You could take those level courses but still only get, you know, 26 credits or even 28 credits, but not meet all the other criteria for the honors distinction diploma.
Mrs. Chairman?
Yes, Dana?
Just for clarification, I'm not sure the audience has what we have, it's a graduation policy. policy, but just so the board knows, underneath social studies, it assumes that there's not, there's not enough selections there, but to assure you, there's many electives that are half-credit. That doesn't show here, for example, Vietnam War, geography. So, there's plenty of opportunities for social studies to be able to get those three and a half credits.
Okay. Any other comments? Move on. Anything else, Shirley?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pittman.
Sir.
Building agents?
I'll use the microphone. I don't have a big booming voice like Shirley. We did have a meeting of the building and maintenance committee on March 23rd. We had a fairly robust agenda, which was led off by a discussion of the Hopeway and memorandum of understanding, which should have had some resolution, except that the town of Effingham, of course, postponed our election. So, we didn't have anything to say about it. Of course, everybody knows at this point that that particular warrant article was decisively rejected by the voters, so we will speak no more of this, at least for now. We also talked about the Magic Moments Playground. Wolfboro Children's Center received a grant to provide a new play structure at LRTC for their playground, and it's used exclusively by the students enrolled in the Magic Moments program. This school here, Carpenter, will be replacing their playground, and we had a brief discussion on that. The district will pay to dispose of the current playground at the end of the school year. Also on the agenda was a discussion of the Route 28, Department of Transportation, Wolfboro Project, which people may be aware, Route 28 is going to undergo some major highway work that is scheduled now to happen in 2025, but expect major traffic jams that summer. And also, you can look forward to everybody's favorite new thing, which is a roundabout, apparently, being planned for in front of the Kingswood Complex. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more discussion about that, but we'll see what goes on. It's a couple of years away. We'll see. We did hear about an impact fees meeting with the town of Wolfboro. I won't bore anybody with the details of that, but I will say, I think it was a good meeting, clarified some things that were going on there that were maybe a little less organized than they should have been. We updated, we had a safe grant update. The state of New Hampshire approved $241,000 for security action for education. That's the safe grant funds for the district. Money's been allocated, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think all schools, with the exception of Effingham, and was there one other, Carolyn?
The tech center.
And the tech center will benefit from those funds. We had a very extended conversation about the turf field, which will be coming up for reconditioning renewal shortly, and want to thank Phil and Sarah Custo, was that how you pronounced her name?
Yes.
Okay. Who came in and helped us with understanding the composition of the turf field, and central to the conversation was whether the materials that are currently being used are safe enough for our students and others. Led to action item of further research. We have a little bit of time before we get into the next round of reconditioning, so hopefully we'll get some quality information back on that. Talked about lining at the arts center, and I think we, the minutes are conflicted here, but I think what we found out is that we have more information forthcoming on that. Is that correct?
We'll get to readings.
We'll get to readings. That's what it was. Yes, okay. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 18th, 1:00 p.m. at the SAU building, and that is my report.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Jan. Okay. Currently, I have nothing on the finances, except again, thank you to the voters for supporting our budget and the teachers' contract and the rest of the warrant articles that are out there. Gives us the opportunity to keep this district in very good shape. And nothing on human resources, so we'll go to advanced planning. You can see down, down below, the school vacation is April 24th through 28th. Our next board meeting is a joint board meeting between Governor Wilkworth, again, Prospect Mountain, Wolkenborough, and Farmington. We meet at the vocational center for, to update the sending towns on the facility there and their students' activities. And our, that starts at 6:00, so our board meeting that night won't be until 7:30, and that'll be held at the middle school. Usually we do that in the library at the middle school. Gold Scholar Luncheon is on the 23rd of May at the Back Bay Book House, where the school board and the gold scholars can meet and award diplomas or plaques for the gold scholars. No School on Memorial Day on the 30th of May. We will have our retirement reception on 6/5 at the Skylight Dining, starting at 4:00, and that is before our regular school meeting at 6:00, June 5th. That's all for there. We will now do some additional public input if somebody would like to speak. We'll, 15 minutes, again, three minutes per if you, if you'd like to say something. And if not, I will look for closing comments for any board members. Okay. Brody.
I have listened to the last couple of meetings, some of the discussion, and I appreciate that there seemed to be some agreement on age and developmentally appropriate materials. In my own kind of looking into what kind of books we have in our schools, my own personal, not speaking on behalf of the district or the board, my own personal, it seemed to me that SOAR is not accessible to all of our students, and that there are some age restrictions, depending on the age of your student, which to me is a very important distinction, in that the books of concern are on SOAR for older students, and that they're not physically present in our libraries. That's at least from my understanding and talking to parents, staff, short conversations with our administration. SOAR, if anyone doesn't know, is like an online app where you access books. It's very similar to the public library, I'm a public library trustee, to Libby, right? Libby is the, you know, the more broader for the general populace, SOAR is for students, and it's tended to be used by older students. To my understanding, too, some of the books of concern, because they're not physically in our libraries, are not involved in our curriculum, and I think that's another really important distinction, and also the fact that we do have a policy that's mandated by state law that allows parents to off their children and students out of any curricula or materials. When I was in school, I remember we got a reading list at the beginning of the year, and I believe this is still how it's actively done, a reading list that's provided, and even a list of the types of movies that are provided during the school year in the curricula that parents need to read, review, and sign off that they see that, which I think is really important, because we talked tonight some about informed consent, and that informed consent is important, and to my understanding, again, my personal understanding, it is being done. So, that's at least in my kind of personal research in talking to parents, taxpayers, staff, and I think that, I think that is how it should be done. It puts parents in the driver's seat to decide what resources their kids are accessing, and make sure that our libraries have age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate materials. And I advocate that our staff to continue following the state law policies that have been adopted by this board, and, and any constitutional precedents that are necessary. So, with that, I just wanted to say that I think it's important to get that out there, because it hasn't really been stated, as Evelyn can relate, I think, as some may want to state.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, go ahead, Jan.
I want to thank people here tonight, and also everybody in the district that supported the budget, and are very generous to our school system. And people asked me what my agenda was when I ran for the board, and my agenda was to try and save the taxpayers' money. Well, it's just about impossible, but we're still working on it. Thank you. And you know that apple that kept going back and forth? They almost didn't have it at the end, sitting right here at the edge of the table. Thank you.
Any other comments? Good memory.
I just want to say how appreciative I am to be sitting in this spot, because I am blown away by the capability, the presence of the parents. I've watched a lot of board meetings on, on, at home, you know, pajamas and stuff, but I've, and I've worked in the school system in another state, of course, but for 30-plus years, and when I see the continuity and the civility and the eagerness to have a discussion, and the listening, and the participating, is the only way we're going to move forward. I am the luckiest person sitting here, I think, because I get to play with you guys. Thank you.
Shirley.
Well, I'm going to use my big booming voice again. I just wanted to say, and I'm going to take a point of, what's it called? Personal privilege. Anyway, personal privilege, thank you. All three of our babies went to Carpenter School, and this, you know, it's really, it's really great to be here, to see, you know, so many, so many familiar faces, but also so many new faces, and, you know, to experience the enthusiasm that, you know, our educators bring to, I believe, our entire student population. And I also wanted to just share that about 30 years ago, Dick and I and our oldest daughter, Natalie, who was probably about 12 at the time, and our, our middle daughter, Kim, were very much active in building with other volunteers the Sugar Maple Playground 30 years ago. And at the time, our youngest baby was probably about two, so, but it's just, you know, to see things that, that are still consistent and well taken care of, but also to know that the enthusiasm of the PTO to help make this take place, you know, the voters of Wolfboro who generously approved the warrant article to contribute $50,000 to that, to that effort, you know, the overwhelming support of our warrant articles, it's, it's just, it just brings joy. My heart soars like an eagle, and that's all.
Dr. Jim, anything?
Yes. Thank you, Mary and Jan, for having us. Those first graders are amazing. I mean, I know I couldn't have done that when I was a first grader. The last time we had, I think the last time we got here unfold was the event that I would rather forget because of the dance. And I'm not a very great dancer, but they actually pulled it off, but tonight was a lot easier on me. I'll take that one.
Jim, anything?
I just echo what Dr. Jim says. I was looking at those kids going, how courageous of them to stand up here in front of this scary school board of people, you know, and do what they did. I mean, I remember in high school, I was a graduation speaker. I was a lot older than them, and I was terrified, and, you know, to see them standing there and just doing it was very impressive.
Stephanie.
I want to say, what I thought about the first graders, I thought, almost one year from tonight, there's going to be a total solar eclipse in New Hampshire, and I hope that they are looking skyward and making observations then. I wanted to say, we had awesome representation. I got to see Emily Mathos perform Cuadrille Loud. She did great. She went to state finals, which was really exciting to see, and it was awesome to see the Kingswood Middle School High School Arts Night, which was fabulous. If anybody got to go and listen to music and see the art, we have so many talented students in our district. And I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Eric Kellyan for doing such a thoughtful job of getting to know our district this year, and appreciating our strengths and our areas of growth. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Tom.
First, I'd like to thank the voters for giving me their vote of confidence. And another thing, I want to report that the agricultural science class out of the Lakes Region Technical School, which was adjacent to the campus at Kingswood, went to the Future Farmers of America State Convention, and they came home with two first-place prizes and a second-place prize and a third-place prize, different endeavors that they participated in. Also, I'm sad to report that Mr. Rowley has passed away. You might have seen his obituary. I always thought that he was a pretty miraculous teacher, and when I read his obituary, he was a pretty miraculous guy. He was a graduate and a doctoral graduate, so, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I'd just like to thank Jan and Mary for leading the school at this point. I really appreciate you stepping up and doing that for us, and I really, really thank you.
You're pleased to join us.
Thank you. Okay. I would, I did, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. You're so far over there.
I know. I always mention the theater program, but I just want to congratulate the Kingswood Theater Program, because at their regional competition, they went up against five other schools, and they were one of only two that got invited to go on to the state finals. So, congratulations to them. Also, I wanted to congratulate some kids from the middle school, because we don't do that as often, but there were a number of middle school kids that got invited to sing and play instruments at the Lakes Region Music Festival for the middle school in Belmont last month, and that was really cool, so.
Thank you. Okay. Go for it. You want to say something?
Yes. The state competition is this weekend.
Yes. The theater state competition is this weekend.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're finished. Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Brody?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jim. Tom?
Aye.
Brody? Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Thank you everyone for your turn. Thank you so much for being here.